We're at a point, hopefully, that we will start seeing some finalization out of their budget. They're not there yet, so as of today, we don't know exactly what their revenues will be and exactly what their expenses will be. They're still actually in the process of working down through the budget. I mean, obviously, they're well into that process, but they're not completed yet. So, the select board members that attended with me, it was informative, good questions were asked, and I really appreciated that opportunity. And I did actually receive some feedback that said, "Members of the board from Reedfield asked some really nice, intelligent questions." So, that was good.
May I piggyback on that?
Please do.
One of the questions that I asked towards the end of the meeting was about the debt service for the RSU, and their debt is actually getting lower. It's about $2.5 million, I think, is what... and they're looking at taking out a rather large bond, but that will not be ready for this school budget cycle, so they're not sure exactly when that will be. They've been waiting for an architect's report to come back to them on the condition of all of their assets, so they can figure out what it is they need to repair and when. But it'll probably be during this school year that they're going to ask us about bonding for repairs, so at least we're not looking at that being put into this annual budget.
That's correct.
So, that was good.
And John and I both participated in a 12-hour, basically about 12-hour program on Friday night and most of the day Saturday, which is called Future Search, where, oh, about every five years or so, there are a number of community representatives that get together from different boards, from teachers, from staff, from the public, from all kinds of walks of life. I mean, there's even some volunteers that just simply show up and participate as well. We had about 70 people. It was a very good process. Yes, Eric was one of the individuals who also participated. Thank you, Eric. I think it was a very good process. It's just a start at looking at what the goals are for the school district, looking forward. And it's really a good opportunity for the community to plug into the school district and sort of give some guidance and some thoughts, and also to meet and hear from people who are very involved in the schools as well. If we're all set, we'll...
If I could touch on that real quick.
Sure.
It certainly gave me a different view of what our school system is going through. I served on a school board back in the mid-'80s when money was flush and being thrown around like crazy. Different challenges today to schools, and it gave me a new appreciation of the staff, the administration, the school board, everybody that just puts all of our school systems statewide together. It's quite a challenge.
Thank you, John. We'll move on to town staff reports. Eric?
All right. I'll try to be quick here with my treasurer's and town manager's report. I'll start with my town manager's report. With respect to maintenance and infrastructure, the frost heave signs have been put out around town, but if we miss a spot or if one appears, please let me know, and we'll be happy to put a sign out for any big bumps that might be out there. The holder had another PTO problem with the last storm, and we're basically looking to the spring now. We're planning spring work. We do plan replacing the PTO as a means of ensuring that we have a functional piece of equipment to sell or trade in, so that's going, but it's not going well.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do we have any idea how much that repair will be?
$500 to $600.
Okay. I'm not particularly interested in spending any more on that machine.
I don't want a holder on to it.
(laughing)
Any longer.
The issue is, if we're looking to sell or...
Trade it.
Or trade it, that could have probably more than a $500 or $600 impact in the negative...
I'm not opposed to this expense. I don't want to go into... I mean, if it needs a few thousand, I don't think we're going to get it back, so technically, sell it for parts.
I agree.
Technically, we want to fix the PTO and never use it again.
That's my hope. (laughing)
You're here.
Yeah. So, it's been a hard winter, and my next bullet kind of gets to that as well. The last couple of snowstorms have been quite challenging. We had complaints nearly townwide for a variety of reasons, whether it was slush, or snowbanks, or conditions on the roadways. But John was responsive in getting out to address things as quickly as he could, and we had a real set of issues on 135 north and south, Gordon Road and Stanley Road. And I attribute that, a lot of it, to, well, there's some snow drifting that happens, but primarily, it's the condition of that pavement. It is so rough, and we've talked about this before, that the wheel ruts and the roughness of that make it challenging. So, that will be paved next year, and I expect that the new surface condition will make maintenance a lot easier.
You mean paved this year?
This year.
2018? Yes, okay.
2018, yeah. This year, yeah. No, I...
Next budget.
You corrected me. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I got it.
Fiscal, next fiscal year, yeah. But this calendar year. We are putting on RFP for cemetery tree work this week, so if you know any arborists, tell them to keep an eye out on the town website. This is the complete cemetery work that's been planned for the year. We are also preparing an RFP for repair of the salt sand shed. That structure needs some work, and I've been working with the road committee to put something together. We will be meeting with an engineer, or maybe a couple of engineers, this Friday to take a look at that structure and make sure we can get underway appropriately. And then, my final note is that we received a $3,000 radar speed sign from Main Local Road Center, so I want to thank the Main Local Road Center and let you know that we did purchase a small trailer, a little 4x6 unit, to go with that, and as soon as the banks melt back and the temperatures get above freezing, we will be putting that out on the roadside like they have in Wayne, and people will be able to have responsive feedback. You're going too slow, you're going too fast, you know, here's your actual speed. Going too slow probably won't show up much, but...
No, I don't think that's going to be an issue. We could all try it out, though.
Give you some feedback data.
Yeah, well, it'll be out soon, so I'm very pleased with that, because we had been budgeting for it, so now we don't have to. Administration and personnel, we have a new backup CEO and LPI, Licensed Plumbing Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer. Both of these men have worked in the position before for the town of Reedfield, George Barr as LPI and Cliff Buck as CEO, and they're here basically in the event that Gary Sickers is on vacation, as he was about two weeks ago. So, we had Cliff cover, and I think we're in a good position to fill any voids. The other item I have is that legal review is underway for all of the ordinances that we have initiated changes to or new for the upcoming warrant. Any questions on administration or personnel? All right. Transfer station. The transfer station access road is gradually improving. The frost being back in the ground helps a little bit, but really, we have added a lot of material, pushed the snowbanks back quite far, and are working to make sure that that, when it does come out of thaw, you know, that it's not as much of a mess as it was before. It'll still be slick, but it won't be as bad, because we did have some good melting happen. Also, we are looking at paving that road. I've added that to the budget, offset by revenues from our reserve fund for that access road and for the transfer station in general, so that's the plan going forward. And I also want to remind residents that with the thaw, gardens will start going in, you can take a reasonable amount of material from the compost pile to amend your gardens and use for mulch, if you like. Lastly, I have a couple of announcements. We have an important public budget meeting coming up on March 29th. We sent postcards out to residents last week. You should have received those. If not, take a look at the town website. We have a lot of information there, but March 29th, 6:30 PM here at the town office, we will be going over the budget. And also, nomination papers are available, and they are due back on April 13th. That concludes my town treasurer's report.
I have just one comment. I received the budget meeting card, and it was very nice, except for the web address. It said it was in Reed Filed, Maine.
Reed Filed.
And it should be Reed Field, I think.
Yes, it should.
I guess since filed was a word, it didn't spell check it, but I'm going to assume that most people would think that it was the name of the town.
Read it right, yeah.
Is it Reed Field Name dot org?
Yes, that's correct. I don't know how that one got passed, but of course, it does when you send it out to 1,000 people.
Of course.
Yeah. All righty. Thank you for that.
But if we're going to reprint it, at least we can have it on file.
Yes, absolutely. All right. Treasurer's report. This should be pretty brief. We actually have very normal-looking numbers for once. Not much variability this month for the month of February. We did go through the check reconciliation through February 28th, and our accounts are in balance, and I did not see any unusual activity, no bounced checks or anything like that. We are still awaiting the final draft of the 2017 audit, and we are also preparing an RFP for audit services to go out to bid. This has been recommended by the budget committee, and I think it is about time to put it back out to bid. I'm looking at a three-year initial term with up to a two-year extension, so essentially a five-year contract, and that should be going out in the next month or so. Give you something to look at later on. We should be... Actually, I'll back up here. Under comments, February 2018 saw nearly identical percentage drops in revenue and expenditure relative to 2017. They were small. The change was not reflected in year-to-date totals, however, so we had a little bit of an anomaly there. Could be the weather that we had kept people from coming in and registering things, but we did have a small drop. And, let's see. Expenditures. Interest on taxes were unusually high in February, and my investigation into why that was, you know, something like a 200%, 321% increase. Numbers like that I'd try to look at, but what I found was that we actually had a higher-than-normal percentage of the taxes that were past due for 2015, which is the last, the year that we would be entering foreclosure process for, were higher-value properties. So, it's the law of small numbers. We just had an off year, in my view, and we had a few houses that were, you know, assessed at several hundred thousand as opposed to the usual, you know, 100,000 to 200,000. So, that accounts for that increase in the month of February, because that's when those were due, to avoid the foreclosure process, so...
And didn't you work aggressively to get those all taken care of?
We worked very aggressively. We went door-to-door in cases to make sure people paid their taxes and didn't lose their homes, so...
Yeah.
Yes. And that is my report for the month of February.
Are there any questions on the treasurer's report?
Nicely done, and I thank you for getting it out ahead of time, which we had asked you previously to do. That was very useful to be able to look it over.
Thanks for noticing. And I do apologize for that. Reed Field, Reed Feld?
Reed Filed.
Reed Filed. Don't know what to say. Yeah.
It's a typo. It's okay.
So, the town hasn't been renamed?
It has not. No executive order to do such, so...
Red Field. All right. You can bear with me one moment. We have a public hearing scheduled for 7:00, and that is a public hearing regarding the Weathervein Restaurant. I'm assuming some folks are here in regard to that, because somebody could walk in at 7:00. I am going to take a couple more items on the agenda, and we will then break and start that at 7:00. So, we stay with the announced time, so I'm not ignoring anybody. I just want to make sure that anybody who comes in at 7:00 is accommodated. So, we'll proceed with continuing with communications. And in your packet, we have the library board minutes for February 15, 2018, and the budget committee minutes for February 15 and February 22, 2018, and both of those are in your packet. I want to thank those committees. And I think I've said this previously, there's a lot of good information regarding the budget in the budget committee meetings themselves. They're very robust in terms of how their review was and what questions were asked and so forth, so I do, if you're looking into the budget sometimes, if you have a question, you might actually find it by looking at those minutes. Anybody from the public who would like to address us can at this point, if you want to address us, however, in the public hearing, let's wait for that to start at 7:00. So, are there any members in the public who would like to address the select board for any other purpose beyond the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to 18-114, which is the appointment of ballot clerks. If you will find that in your packet, there is a list of names of ballot clerks.
Oh, look, I get to be on the list.
So, my question, I'm still looking for it myself.
It's on the back of the list.
If you want, I can pass it. The one I want you guys to sign, anyway, so...
That's our clean copy.
So, my understanding on this, and I see the ballot clerks, Sandra, thank you for being one, the... Aren't those supposed to be an even number of Democrats and Republicans?
I think at the...
Or is that when you actually have them?
When you have the polls. This is the last...
So, each party can nominate as many as they want, but obviously, it's a one-for-one thing when we actually...
Absolutely, yeah. And we did have one more, I think, Democrat, but they were no longer interested, so I think that that was what the change was there. Robin will correct me if I'm wrong, so...
Okay, so...
But this is the pool from which to pick.
This is the pool from which to pick, yes.
So, depending on who shows up and is available on that particular night.
Okay, I understand.
How many do we normally have present?
I believe we normally have two or three from each party. Is that right, Sandra?
It depends on where you got the poll. If you have to have two of each, you have one of each.
Yeah. Okay. Yep, thank you.
And so, this is the appointment for the 2018 ballot and election clerks. The list is in your packet. Unless it pleases the board, I don't think we need to read all the names, but they're all individuals who you're probably familiar with in town. So, I would take a motion regarding the appointment of the 2018 ballot and election clerks.
A second. I'll make a motion.
You make it.
I thought you made the motion. I'll make a motion that we appoint the ballot clerks as listed.
Okay, it's been moved, and do we have a second? It's been moved and seconded to appoint the 2018 ballot and election clerks as noted.
And I want to thank them for stepping forward and helping out with that.
Great. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor. Thank you, ballot clerks.
Thank you.
I think we're close enough now to go ahead with this.
Yeah.
It could be here for conservation as well.
That's true.
So, basically, okay, we have, the select board will hold a public hearing on the application for a liquor license for Jeffrey Marazak doing business as the Weathervein Restaurant in Reed Field, Maine, and this hearing is in compliance with Title 28A, Section 653 MRSA. And so, if I could have a motion from a board member to open the public hearing, please.
I'd make a motion to open the public hearing for the Marazaks' application for the Weathervein liquor license.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. So, this hearing is to renew a liquor license for the Weathervein Restaurant during their 18th year, and I'm going to go ahead and invite public comment. I would ask that members of the public who are here to speak for about two minutes or less, and we want to hear everybody, so that's why we would do that. So, are there members of the public who would like to speak? Okay, please go right up to the microphone, and it's, you know, somebody's always got to go first, so... Thank you, sir.
Okay, my name is Jeffrey Marazak, and I am the owner of the Weathervein Restaurant, and I want to start out by thanking you for the opportunity to address this forum. And some things I'd like to talk about, some things that are questions on the mind of the public, and by rights, I think you need to hear from the horse's mouth. I am a member of this community, and as a member of this community, I share the same feelings and sadnesses and mourning as the rest of my neighbors. Whether it be sickness or injury, death by natural causes, or tragedies, I am just as affected as anyone in our town and community about it. Some things you may not know about me that I'd like to just shed light on. Except for a three-year absence from this state, I have been in Reed Field in Mount Vernon for the past 30 years. I am 60 years old. I married my wife here. It'll be 39 years in August, and I have raised six children, all that I think are very smart, all self-sufficient. Three of them college-educated, one of them a registered nurse dedicating her life to help the sick and injured. All of them religiously educated and attended church for most of, at least, all of their childhood. All of them a working member of our family restaurant at some point in the past. Three of us in the restaurant, in the family, are certified alcohol servers, certified according to the state of Maine. All my family and children were raised with consideration and respect for others. I have seven grandchildren going through the Marana Cook School system. Now, some of those grandchildren are working in the family business. I have five siblings. I have never been arrested, nor has any of my siblings. I have a brother now retired, who's a captain of a police department, retired now, but is in a town in Connecticut. I believe in the law of the land. I believe in respect for my fellow man. I believe in love of family and neighbor and country. A little history, I purchased the restaurant in 2001 after a 25-year career in the automotive business, service business. I wanted to get out, get out of the chemicals, get out of the carbon monoxide, and, you know, starting to get a little healthier because of it before it killed me. I am a musician of sorts. I've played music in bands since the age of 18. I love the glamour of the stage, and I love the social event. I found the Weathervein an attractive buy as, in my eyes, a place of good food and good entertainment for 22-plus years before I owned it. I wanted to challenge myself as a business owner to be successful and to be recognized in the community as a business leader, an entertainer, and a friend. In regards to the business, all the bartenders that work for me are required to pass an alcohol server training course recognized by the state of Maine. As standard procedure, our entire staff is constantly trained and reminded on a weekly basis to communicate with each other regarding potential problems with patrons. I am always on the premises, policing my property, guarding my door, IDing young people, and verifying sobriety to the best of my ability, questioning groups as to who's driving, who is responsible for who. And you need to know that we cut off people that we sense any behavior that shows impairment or just undesirable behavior in general. We do pull keys from people. We do arrange for rides home. We personally drive people home if no other arrangements can be made. I would like to address the formal complaint that the town received of June, I believe, 18th of last year, as if I may read it, and then I may respond to it. The complaint reads, Tyler J. Goucher, 21, of Wayne, told police that three men had been drinking at a local restaurant, and he was the most sober, so he was the driver of May 12th in Mount Vernon. The complaint goes out to say, "Everyone knows that the Weathervein Restaurant illegally serves underage patrons and overserves customers who go out and drive away in the community. This is creating a dangerous environment for those of us who travel in that area. Serious deadly accidents have happened as a result of the Weathervein's staff and owner's careless behavior. There are strict guidelines for operating a business in Maine for those who hold liquor licenses. Please pull their liquor license." I'll refrain from the name of who that is, because it's irrelevant, in my opinion. What I'd like to say about that is there are so many false statements in this complaint that personally, I should consider bringing a slander suit against the author, but I won't do. Instead, I will state for you the facts and let them speak for themselves, what they didn't tell you. Four young men entered the restaurant on that particular night. I immediately warned my two bartenders, one being my daughter Jacqueline in the middle, of potential troublemakers, referring to Tyler Goucher and the fact that he tried to start a physical fight with his buddies approximately a month before. I don't recall seeing the guy ever before that, but I was told he came in one night and he was drunk. My daughter IDed the young men to validate their age. They identified Ethan Russell as a minor, and at that time, all of the young men, including Russell himself, acknowledged Russell as being their designated driver. Russell was not served. At that time, I warned my daughter and the other bartender of my mistrust of Tyler Goucher, and that the moment that you get a bad feeling about Goucher, to shut him down. That came about an hour later. In the process... Forgive me. In the process of being social and the guys buying drinks for themselves as well as others, Goucher comes to my daughter Jackie ordering two drinks, one for himself, one for a friend at another table. She made the two drinks. Goucher grabs his drink and chugs it down without taking a breath. My daughter, astonished by what has happened, got verbal with him, stating, "What the hell is the matter with you?" Without a word, he looks her right in the eyes with a look of, "The hell with you," grabs the friend's drink, and chugs that one down without taking a breath. She immediately got angry and cut him off, not because he was drunk, because of his careless behavior. There are other witnesses in the room to this, and also plenty of witnesses to validate the designated driver, and offers by others to drive him if needed, where he also insisted to the others that he and they had their own designated driver. Some twist that none of us know is what happened after they left. The complaint states that everyone knows that the Weathervein illegally serves underage patrons. May I please see a raise of hands of people in this room who know this statement to be true? We are all part of everyone, so who else knows this to be a fact? I don't know it to be a fact, and I live there and I own there. Second complaint states, "Over serves customers to go out and drive in the community. Serious deadly accidents have happened as a result of the Weathervein staff and owner's careless behavior." I'd like to know what careless behavior that somebody knows about that I don't know. I'd like to know what careless behavior that somebody knows about that I don't know about. One fact is true in the statement. Tyler told the police that they were drinking at the local restaurant. That's true. The rest is gossip. And gossip is perception. And perception is the belief as one sees it, regardless of its accuracy. Here's a couple of facts that you need to know, and I'm not even sure that I should say them in a public forum that has a camera going for the people to see, but I'm going to say them. Tyler Goucher and family were contemplating hiding the fact that he was a driver. I got that fact from the state police investigation. And the reason was the police investigator that came to see me, he asked me if I had cameras on the premises showing the backyard. And the reason that he said that is because he's trying to tell me that Tyler Goucher is saying that he doesn't know who the driver was. Okay? And I also got that fact from a family member of the Gouchers who happened to be in the restaurant a month later, telling a story to several people who were also witnesses in this event. The second thing is he tells the police, who told a newspaper that printed it, that he had to drive because he was the least drunk. Now, let me ask you a question. Think about that statement for a moment. He had to drive. What does the law say about having to drive drunk because you are the least drunk? I don't know everything I've ever read, never told me, well, it's okay to drive if you're the least drunk. The fact of the matter is, he wasn't the least drunk. There was somebody with him who was sober, and there was somebody with him who was designated. Okay? And the Weathervein took a little ease in the fact that that was the truth. A twenty-one-year-old... never mind, I'm not even going to go there. As far as the restaurant, did we check IDs? Yes, we did. Did we determine a valid designated driver? Yes, we did. Did we cut off someone because of inappropriate or irresponsible behavior? Yes, we did. Nobody likes a troublemaker, and nobody likes a drunk. Not me, not my daughter, not my family, and not you, the general public. I am not a policeman, but I am forced to police my own affairs. I run a clean business. Violence is practically nonexistent at my establishment, and I have no tolerance, a no-tolerance approach to anyone who disrespects me, my help, my patrons. And I have my fair share of people who are banned from ever coming into the restaurant just because of behavior that I don't like. I just don't like it. Things that I, we, or anybody can't stop. We can't stop bad behavior. We can't stop people who peel out with their cars. We can't stop people from speeding or violating driving rules. We can't stop people with anger issues. We can't stop people who kill other people. All these things exist in our society, all these things that we have laws in place for. A small percentage of the population just simply seem to can't be able to abide by laws. It doesn't make it someone else's fault for other people's poor choices. Decisions are their own. They're not mine, and they're not yours. Some questions to consider. Did I make Tyler Goucher drink too much? Did my serving cause Tyler Goucher to drive ninety miles an hour on a back road because he didn't know right from wrong? How about his passengers? Do you suppose that he ignored his passengers perhaps screaming, "Slow down before you kill us" because the Weathervein fed him too much liquor? Did Tyler Goucher's drinking cause him to take over the driver's seat, taking away from the commitment of the designated driver who is now not living? In closing, it is sad for me to come here and defend myself, my family, my employees, from gossip, slander, and untruths. But I also understand that my neighbors, my town, and my community would otherwise never get the truth if I didn't come forth in my own defense. To say you got a bad meal, to say you got bad service is an opinion that I accept whether I like it or not. To say that I or we carelessly over-serve because our only interest is our cash register, to assume we just love drunk and good times, to say that we are habitual offenders of the law is not only unfair, it is a lie, it is slanderous, and worst of all, it carelessly hurts the feelings and reputations of our hard-working, family, people, employees, that are also our neighbors in our community. No matter what people, individuals need to be held accountable for their own actions. It is very painful for me, to my family, when my own daughter cries over the tragedy of her high school colleagues getting killed or injured and having people point their finger at her, at us. When she says, "Dad, we followed the law to a T. We did all the right things. We asked all the right questions, took all the right precautions," yet people without fact blame. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll proceed with the public hearing if there are other individuals who wish to speak. I would ask you to confine yourself to a couple minutes. The chair completely indulged the owner of the restaurant. He is defending his establishment and had the right to an extensive statement as far as I was concerned. Are there other members of the public who would like to speak? Please do so now.
I feel the same way. I'll speak out.
Thank you. You don't need to go to the microphone for that one slight comment. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Are there questions from members of the board?
I guess I've got one thing. I'm familiar with liquor licenses and laws from having had an establishment before, and I would... You say the state police investigated the whole thing, and I'm sure if they would have found you at fault, that you wouldn't have a liquor license today.
I would believe so.
Yeah, I would hope so.
I would think if anybody thought that I did something criminally wrong, I think it would be right for them to book you again.
Exactly. Yep, yep. And I hope you continue with your practice of checking IDs, of cutting people off, of hopefully having somebody responsible in a group of people who are maybe drinking too much, who is not drinking. You know, the designated driver thing is... I mean, we have that for a reason. And, you know, I personally would not hold you responsible for other people's actions. You seem to have done everything that you possibly could do in that situation, and I would think in all situations that are like that, so...
So I'll take any other comments from members of the board, and if we are going to have a discussion, we'll call you to the podium so it's appropriately on television. Are there any other comments from the board or questions?
I have just one.
Please, please.
I just want to be absolutely clear for everybody. So the Weathervein doing business as your company have not been cited by the state police or the bureau for any wrongdoings?
No.
Thank you.
Never considered the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we close this hearing, and I'm going to take a motion next to do so since no one else is deciding to come forward and speak, I want to say that I appreciate you coming and giving us very detailed comments. You know, when we decide to have a hearing, it is because we have a complaint, and I really felt that you respected the process, and I do appreciate that. As tough as it is, I think we have an obligation to go ahead and hold a hearing, and we would do that with any liquor license holder in the state, I mean, in the town, including yourself again in the future if that should come up. But hopefully, your statement tonight stands as a statement of how you operate your business, and I do really appreciate the time you spent coming down here and the supportive friends and staff, apparently. So I will take a motion now to conclude the hearing, and I will, before we take that, I'm going to tell you that we will go out of order and deal with this liquor license immediately because I think that's only fair to everybody who's in the room. So I'll take a motion to conclude the hearing.
I'll make a motion to conclude the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on this liquor license for the Weathervein Restaurant. All in favor? I'm going to make a motion that we approve the liquor license as submitted for Mr. Marzak doing business as the Weathervein Restaurant. It's a restaurant lounge. All the material in the application is in your packet. It's what they call a Class XI XI liquor license. I'm making that motion. Could I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just want to say thank you very much, and I appreciate all that you do for our town, and I will continue to look forward to seeing you.
Do we need to authorize someone to sign, or...
You all would need to.
Or do we all sign?
We all sign a liquor license, so it's not an individual representing the board.
Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to second what John and Bruce have said. I really appreciate you coming forward. I know it takes a lot of gumption to do that, and I think it was the right thing to do because it sets the record straighter, and I think that's what the public needs. So thank you all for coming and doing that.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it.
We're going to take the vote. All in favor? Liquor license approved for the Weathervein Restaurant. Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the night. You're also welcome to leave, as so often seems to happen.
Do you have the clean copy for the...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I circulated a copy in this direction. Thank you so much.
Does anyone have the copy of the election paper that Bruce was sending around that we needed to sign?
Yes.
Okay, it just needs to come back. Thank you.
Did you get the warrant?
Yes.
We have enough stuff out of order here now, so we're going to go on to considering a liquor license for the Emporium Restaurant. The application is in your packet. There is no hearing for this. We only have a hearing when we have a request or a complaint for one.
And we're not actually out of order?
No.
Right in order.
Back in order, aren't we?
Yeah. Good job.
Okay. Could I have...
I move that we accept the application for liquor license for the Emporium Restaurant as submitted.
I second that.
It's moved and seconded to approve the liquor license for the Emporium, and is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to thank the Vitar's for filling out the application completely and with the correct details, and for being a responsible establishment in town.
Any other? All in favor? Thank you. We'll take a temporary... we'll consider a temporary liquor license for Kent Hill School. That application is in your packet, I believe. Generally speaking, it's called a temporary liquor license. Correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, because they have one or two events they do a year.
Yes, just temporary.
So it's not like they have a year-round liquor...
It's an event license.
It's an event license.
I move that we accept the event license for the Kent Hill School.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the liquor license for the Kent Hill School. Any discussion on that motion?
Yes. I'd just like to state, as I think I do every time, that it is taking place at a school and that we are trusting that the school is following all the rules and only serving adults and not having children there.
I would think so.
I've been to a few of those, and that seems to be the case.
It does.
I've been to several, and it is the case, yes.
I'd just like to state that because it's a school, and I think the public needs to know that we're aware that it's a school and that we're holding them accountable.
Well, it's usually the reunion, and it's all adults.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that's been moved and seconded to approve the temporary liquor license for the Kent Hill School. All in favor? Thank you. That passes. We will go out of order now because I see Mr. Tipping over here, and we'll talk about eighteen-one-one-nine considering investment strategies from municipal funds. Chris, right?
Tippet.
Tippet.
Tippet. I was going to say, you do also have...
We have a tipping contract.
Yeah. I looked at it, I was like, what?
Conflating a couple of things, yeah. I'm sorry about that.
It's a guy? The guy's going to do all the recycling? No wonder so cheap. I would say Alyssa Bittman also is here from EcoMaine, so...
Okay. I'm sorry about that. I didn't realize that someone was here from EcoMaine.
Not to put Sam off, but I...
Do you mind if we proceed with this investment one? It's only going to take a couple of minutes. Thank you so much.
Okay, that's a lot of paper to go past though.
Not only did we change the name of the town tonight, but we changed your name.
Yeah, that's right. Whatever works. Whatever works.
I love it.
Okay, great.
It's down here somewhere. Lisa has a lot of paperwork.
It is.
There it is. I got it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The reason I'm here tonight is Eric and Christine and I have had a couple of meetings about the town's investments, which I have been managing since, oh, gosh, nineteen ninety-five, I think, is when I first started investing. And we've had a very static approach to our investing strategy where we have purchased... originally, it was just a portfolio of stocks, and then several years ago, we modified that to be a portfolio of mutual funds, and that was done at a time when the market didn't cooperate with us. So we have left the portfolio rather static and not had the ability to make a lot of changes because of the costs involved. And we've talked now about the market changing and needing to be more active in our management. And typically, when you have an actively managed portfolio, it gets expensive because you're constantly buying and selling positions, and it costs you to do that. So what we're proposing tonight, and I believe you folks have gotten a two-page summary of an alternative, which is our advisory platform, and the difference with that is we will have a portfolio similar in types of investments. It'll be mutual fund-oriented, but it will be more actively managed because we are able to use funds that have, that don't have a cost to investment. So we can be more diversified in our portfolio. We can look at a lot more investment opportunities, different mutual funds, different mutual fund families, and possibly other investments that will fit the needs of the town, and we don't have to worry about buying and selling and incurring costs to do that. The difference with this type of portfolio is that because it's advisory, there's a fee involved. So on an annualized basis, the town would pay a fee to manage the portfolio, but it does give much more active management. I think in the last probably five... I think in the last probably five to 10 years, we've made very, very little changes other than when something matured. And this way, I have the ability to structure a portfolio based on the town's investment criteria, based on the investment policy statement and the guidelines of the investment policy. And it gives us the freedom to choose from, I dare say, thousands of funds as opposed to one family of funds, which is where we are right now. So, the potential for better performance of the portfolio is there with not a big investment outlay of cost on a regular basis. So, we thought that it would be an appropriate way to take the portfolio to the next level because we've, it has been pretty static right now. We have about 30% of the portfolio is actually sitting in cash because we haven't had the opportunity for places to put it. And with this new portfolio idea, it will have that opportunity and it gives us the freedom to do that and to be more reactive to what the market's doing. Right now, we aren't. We're sort of riding out the market, the ups and downs, but with this type of portfolio, we have the ability to move more quickly if we feel the need to do it. And it's advisory, which means I have the authority to make changes on the town's behalf if we need to. Normally, we don't do that. Normally, it's done based on a meeting and a review with members of the board, but if for some reason, we need to react to something really quickly, we have the ability to do that. And the cost is, in your packets, I said the cost is, what we charge is 1.2% of the portfolio value on an annualized basis and we bill that on a quarterly basis. And obviously, that's based on the portfolio value, so if the portfolio goes up, the fee goes up, but the percentage stays the same. But the incentive is there obviously to increase the portfolio value because then you guys have a bigger portfolio. It stayed pretty static in size and value and I would like to see, using this approach, to increase the portfolio performance as well as the size of the portfolio.
Also, Sam, we have that cash that has to be invested.
Yeah.
And it would cost us almost as much as one year's fees to invest that.
Exactly. If we took that $81,000 and invested it into the mutual funds, based on the level that we're at, the cost of those would be about the same as what we would pay for annualized returns of the entire portfolio as opposed to just that one 30% of it.
And your fee schedule, I work for an investment firm. You would have to have $1 million to get a 1.2 fee for us. So, it's a good fee schedule.
And that is a standardized fee that my organization set based on our clients and the other clients that we have in that type of portfolio. So, it's a pretty standard fee that we use. And in our company, company-wide, we use that as the basis for coming up with the fee schedule. So, the 1.2 is pretty standard.
Now, do you, do you print an ADV2 and give us a copy of that?
Yes. As part of the setting up of the portfolio, because we would take the portfolio that we have now and convert it to an advisory platform, then because it's an advisory platform, I provide all of that information to you guys. Yep, that's the background on us and on me.
And do we sign a agreement of fee?
Yep. Just like we did when we originally set up this portfolio back in 95 and then when I moved to this new company in 2009 and we moved the portfolio to that, we signed new agreements. And that's signed by the folks that whoever is going to have signing authority on the account, not the entire board. We don't need to do the entire board.
No, we probably appoint Eric.
Yep. It's easier to do it with one or two people because if there's a change of membership on the select board, then we have to redo all the papers and so it's easier just to have one or two people.
So, can I ask a question? I know nothing about the investment part of.
Not even enough to be dangerous?
Not even enough to be dangerous. So, let me just, let me just ask like a dumb guy would ask.
Okay.
We're not incurring any more risk by moving this. There's still a governing principle behind the investments of Reed Field, yes?
Yes.
So, it's not like, you know, you're taking our money and like investing in high-risk things so we can change it?
Oh, gosh, no.
Okay. So, this seems like the natural progression of what our investment portfolio should do.
What, that's exactly right. And what it really does is it, I think it lessens the risk because we're going to be able to further diversify the portfolio amongst fund families as opposed to being all focused with one family of funds. Right now, we're, all of our mutual funds are in the Oppenheimer family, which is a great family. No qualms about it and in fact, if I were to move it to the new portfolio, some of the funds that we have may stay there, okay? But then we can also choose from American Funds and from T. Rowe Price and Vanguard and all of the funds that you know and have heard of, whether you know it or not, we have the ability to buy those funds so it can really diversify the portfolio. And so, instead of having five funds, we may have 15 funds.
Right. So, it's not like we're opening up to wild investments. We're merely, we're merely creating opportunities to diversify the investments we already have.
Right, because there's an investment policy that the town has adopted.
Yes, I noticed that, yeah.
And, and the town has an investment objective with income, with.
Modernist growth.
Whatever that is, there are guidelines within that on how I invest in the different categories within the portfolio.
So, you're still bound by that, that general framework, but what we're, kind of think like we're upgrading our Ford Galaxy.
Right.
For like something more.
For a Ford Taurus.
Understood.
What is a Ford Galaxy?
There's a, whenever you.
The Galaxy's no longer me.
Well, that's, well, you know what I mean. It's like an old, but it's an old-school car. That's our old-school investment. Now, we're.
We're starting to get used to you, so.
Right. That's good. I'm glad. That makes, I'm telling you, it helps me because I don't know these things.
Whenever you have an investment, somebody you're going to invest their things, you have to get a look at what their risk is.
Their risk tolerance, right.
Yeah. You do not go and invest without knowing, they're rated, they're aggressive, moderate, so we're moderate.
Investment with moderate growth.
Yes.
Sam, you have other municipalities as clients or your firm does?
Oh, yes, our firm definitely does. Yes, yes. I am currently working, this is the only town that I'm actually doing this type of thing with anymore, but I have other nonprofits that I work with as well and have worked with for years. I've been in this business since 93, so I've got, I've got a lot of experience. And when I took over the town's investment, it was at Casco Bank, so it was a long time ago and it was all stocks. And a lot of them were very aggressive, risky stocks that probably had been given to the town. I'm not even sure how they all came about, but whenever we are working with a municipality, there are, there are state statutes on what types of things the municipality can invest in. And the investment policy that I think I helped craft had those guidelines in mind when we came up with the portfolio, with the portions of where you can invest. So, we're very prudent, very conservative about what we do. And I tend to be rather conservative by nature as a broker anyway. Because I don't want to come back later and tell you that that risky investment didn't work.
We'd haul you in. Yeah, I think that's the major thing that I want the public to be aware of is that this is your money and we have an investment policy in place. Investment policy isn't going to be violated, but we are going to perhaps, if we approve this, allow it to work better for you in a format that should.
Modernize the approach.
And we are finding too, that the advisory platform that we're proposing is really the way of the future in our business. With all of the Department of Labor prudent rules in terms of investing, this is a way to have an awful lot more checks and balances in how investments are handled. And I think it just makes a lot of sense. And I'm finding that people are very attuned to it. We're finding that the returns on the portfolios are as good, if not better, even net of paying a fee. So, it makes a lot of sense because it just, it's a better way to do it, better way to invest for our clients.
Well, and I have a lot of confidence in your review of this as well.
Yeah, it's like, it isn't a time where you want to have money invested and not have anybody watching it. You really need somebody like, our portfolios were always changing. We're always watching something before it goes down, you want to get rid of it, you know, you need somebody watching your funds. You just can't do it yourself.
We did not put anything actionable in this that I saw in document, document here, so I'm assuming we were going to just take a motion to approve this strategy and authorize whoever we needed to, to move forward with signature. Is that correct or can anybody help me with the wordsmithing of that, please? Please do, Chris.
Be happy to work with Chris on it anyway.
I move that we accept Sam's offer to bring us into an agreement with a annual fee of 1.2% and manage our investments and we would authorize Eric Dyer to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anybody need a readback of the motion? Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Safe, so we'll get together and get started.
Be in touch, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions in order, Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Do we need to appoint Eric as?
In the motion.
It was. We just did.
Yeah.
And he was taking, he was the point man anyways for the account.
He seconds the motion. Next, we're going to consider the award of a single-sort recycling tipping contract and we do have somebody from Eco-Maine here, right? And I'm just going to apologize for, I didn't realize that's who you were representing when you came in. So, I'll let Eric sort of guide this discussion to start with. So, what do we have in front of us, Eric?
So, we have a proposal for a single-sort tipping. Included in that are some offers for hauling as a point of reference, not necessarily as something that we would be accepting in tandem. My recommendation on those pieces that we set them aside for now because we currently have a very good rate with our existing hauler. So, even though this packet does include four or so potential haulers, I very much want to keep what we have for the time being and see how long we can, we can move ahead with that. I will say Eco-Maine has been a great partner over the past, two years I've worked with them, I worked with them before that in other municipalities and we are just finishing up a five-year agreement. And my hope is that following this discussion, we would, you would authorize me to enter into another five-year agreement with Eco-Maine for management of our, and acceptance of our single-sort recycling. Eco-Maine was the only provider to put in a proposal and it was a very thorough and well-crafted proposal in my opinion. I hope Alyssa can give some information to this board about some of the additional things besides just accepting the waste that Eco-Maine does. To give you an idea of the fact that this really is a community-owned municipally-operated or owned and operated enterprise, we are not a member-owner per se, but we are a participant, municipal participant. So, we have the option of a cost-sharing relationship. Some of the founding members have a bit different and a bit more probably lucrative in a long-term arrangement, but they took a lot more risk going into it. So, our position with it, within that organization is one of, I guess, associate member, I'm not sure what we'd call it, but.
Contract member.
Contract member, there we go. But in any event, I'll just wrap up and say we have one proposal from a very good partner over the past several years, so.
And we did invite other proposals.
We did, yes, we did.
Alyssa, I'm going to go ahead and just allow you to address us, please.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so we've been in a relationship with a municipality for several years and it's been one that's been quite dynamic with the addition of Fayette coming on board at your transfer station in the last several months. A little bit of background about Eco-Maine is we are a municipally-owned nonprofit organization, so we're considered quasi-municipal, quasi-governmental. We have 20 communities in the greater Portland area that own Eco-Maine. They started the company back in 1976. We have a waste-to-energy power plant where we combust solid waste, use that to make energy, reduce the solid waste by 90% in volume and then we landfill the ash. And that's the kind of byproduct of the electricity generation. We also have the first materials recovery facility that was in the state. We brought that online back in 2001. And essentially, what that facility does is it allows us to bring in mixed recyclables from member communities, be it the owner communities, which, who are the, you know, owning communities of Eco-Maine, the associate communities, which are towns, seven towns that signed a 20-year solid waste and recycling agreement with us back in 2007, and then contract municipalities of which we have 54, like Reed Field and, you know, Augusta and several other communities, Shreve-Ghland where Eric was previous to you. And we take in all of that mixed recycling and we have this automated facility, some manual, some automated systems that enable us to separate all those materials by commodity type. We group everybody's corrugated cardboard together, we group everybody's milk jugs together, everybody's detergent bottles together, we bale that material and then we sell it on the global commodities market. And we use the revenue that is generated from that to first offset our operating costs and after that is covered, we then share back any extra revenue with all of our contract municipalities. So, one of the things that's kind of a luxury for us, because we're municipally-owned and nonprofit, is we have a heavy emphasis on education and community engagement. We have a full-time environmental educator and her sole responsibility is to go out into towns and educate the community around sustainable waste management practices, around the importance of recycling, both from an environmental perspective and from a fiscal perspective, in terms of diverting as much recyclable material out of the solid waste stream into the recycling stream, which is ultimately less expensive than handling it as solid waste and also puts the material to the best and highest use. Katrina and I, she's our environmental educator, spent a really fun, very, very busy day at your transfer station last summer, educating people. We did not take a breath all day. It was just nonstop people coming through. It's the busiest education day I've ever been on and I've been at Eco-Maine for five and a half years and kicked off large programs in other municipalities and it was just hustling all day long and it was a really fun opportunity to connect with all of the residents coming in from Wayne, coming in obviously from Reed Field and then from Fayette, as that was one of their first weekends as part of a member of your transfer station. Katrina can also come up and do education in the schools. We can do waste audits for businesses in your community to help them come to a better understanding of how much material, both recyclable and also potentially compostable, that's actually going into their solid waste. Katrina has helped schools set up recycling programs, also composting programs, and we have a number of different programs that our member municipalities can take part in. One of them is a recycling grant where we give up to $20,000 a year to, away in grants to begin or enhance an already-existing recycling program, garden program, composting program, and schools in our member municipalities can apply for those grants, up to $5,000 per grant. So, that's one of the things that we do. We have eco-excellence awards that we give where we encourage individuals in communities to nominate either individuals and/or businesses in their community who have gone above and beyond from a sustainability perspective. Those nominations come in. Those nominations come in, they're voted on by our recycling committee, and then we invite the winners to come to EcoMaine for a catered lunch, an opportunity to meet with our board, and a chance for their stories to be read in front of the group. They bring guests, and it's just a really nice day of acknowledging, you know, the movers and the shakers in the sustainability world within a community and let their ideas be brought forward to others who can maybe replicate them in their communities and not necessarily have to reinvent the wheel. So, you know, there's a lot of companies out there that do a really good job taking materials and doing something with them. And we can do that, too. But really, our education programs and our engagement in the communities is second to none because we're nonprofit and we're just mission-driven. So Eric, do you feel like that kind of summarizes?
Excellent summary.
Okay. Happy to take any questions as well. We have a very active website. We have a very active social media presence. We also just recently developed a free app that can be embedded on your town website. And it also can be uploaded to smartphones for free, either at the iTunes Store or Google Play. And it's called EcoMaine Recyclopedia. And it's actually a kind of an encyclopedia of recyclables. There's over 700 items in the database, so people can just type in something that they have a question on, you know, polystyrene plates, or dog leashes, or, you know, whatever, pumpkins. You know, we get requests for all kinds of things. And the app will spit back to them instructions on how to, in the most environmentally friendly way, get rid of that item. So that's been a really phenomenal success. We've had thousands of hits on that since it came out. And it's, again, free of charge. And we also have a really fun recycling sorting game that is part of that app called the Wicked Smart Recycler. And that's, you know, to engage kids and their families and help them kind of get a concrete idea of what items should be thrown away, what should be reused, what should be donated, what should be recycled, composted, et cetera.
So the first question I'll ask is to both you and Eric, I guess, is, do we have numbers in terms of costs?
We do and we don't.
We do and we don't.
It is a cost-sharing relationship. So basically, we pay market, or we are paid or pay the market rate. Over the past several years, I did an analysis, and I think over the past five years, our average was paying $8 per ton, paying out $8 per ton. Of course, as I mentioned a month or so ago, there has been some market volatility. We had been paying upwards of 50. Now, I think the last month, we were back down to 30. So obviously, over time, there is some variability. But as I said, over the five years prior, we've paid just $8 per ton as opposed to over 50, or close to or over 50, for solid waste disposal. So it is of value for us, and of course, the right thing to do. But I expect that we'll continue to see some variability in the price, and we'll continue on. Basically, this proposal is just an immediate extension of what we're doing currently.
Okay.
And it's for five years?
It can be for one, three, or five years.
What do you recommend, Eric?
I'm recommending five, at this point.
I really like your outreach services.
Thank you.
I think that's really important. If there's any way it can encourage a large organization like yours to figure out a way to handle plastic film or bags.
I know.
It's one thing I like to pound the desk on. Even if it means sorting at our community level to get them into some sort of recycling endeavor, I would encourage that to always be a discussion as you look at what products you're doing.
Absolutely. I mean, it's something that we wring our hands about constantly. And actually, the program that you have at your transfer station, I truly believe is the best option at the moment.
Yep.
With the plastic film, because of the automated nature of a lot of our sorting equipment, it just gets completely bound up in all of the equipment. And a couple of times a day, we usually have to shut the whole plant down and send people into the systems with box cutters just to hack away all the plastic and the film that has just gummed everything up. The fact that you have a vehicle for your residents to dispose of plastic bags, that you have like a bag of bags at your transfer station, I believe it then gets taken to Hannaford, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. It really is kind of, I know it's very grassroots, and it feels like it would be nice if there was some large systemic process for dealing with that. But it's a very low-value plastic. There's not a lot of companies that want it. Trex is the largest user of that material. They make the plastic lumber out of it. About 90 to 95% of their feedstock is recycled plastic film in some way, shape, or form. So actually, on one of our education pieces, we do note that there is an organization called PlasticFilmRecycling.org, and that's on some of our outreach materials so that people can go and, you know, learn more about how to recycle plastic film and what the options are. I just attended, actually, a really interesting forum up in Belfast a few weeks ago where there's a massive movement around trying to figure out how to recycle agricultural plastic, and particularly, what is it called? Bale wrap? The white wrap that you see around the bale. There was like 40 people there, just a whole bunch of, you know, thought going into it and strategies, looking at it. And it's a big conversation. It's something that we're extremely engaged in. But I would say truly, the program that you have, and then, of course, encouraging individuals not even to use the plastic bags if possible. We're very much harp on reduce and reuse, you know, in terms of the waste hierarchy before you even get to recycle and compost. But you're doing, really, I think, the best that can be done right now.
I appreciate that. Other questions? And it's Alyssa, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You say you have a program where you would come into schools and talk to the students. Has anybody from our CSD approached you to do that?
Not that I'm aware of recently. And that would be something that, you know, as you can imagine, schools these days are quite protective of their environment and having strangers come in. So what we need for sure is someone from the school who is a champion. There's usually a science teacher or, you know, somebody who is incredibly environmentally focused. And if that person, if we can either be put in touch with that person, that person reaches out to us, whatever, all we need is that point of contact, and then we can take it and run with it.
So I did make a note already, John, to talk with the school about finding somebody and some way to integrate. And also see if they were interested in one of those audits because the campus up there is a big contributor.
Huge, yeah.
Yep. Probably the largest.
Thank you. Probably the largest.
I think the school doesn't even come to Reed Field, correct? The school waste, I believe, is contracted out of town.
Okay, I'll have to look at that.
Yeah.
I believe it goes into Augusta.
Well, in any case, are there any additional questions?
Thank you for coming and making the presentation.
Thank you.
I'm chair of the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, and so I will report back at our next meeting on your presentation tonight.
Okay.
And we have a couple of projects that people are very interested in, so we'll be in touch.
Okay, that sounds super. And by the way, even if the solid waste from the school doesn't come into your facility, as long as students from your municipalities attend that school, we still can go in and teach them about sustainability. And Augusta has a single sort recycling with us as well. And even at Hatch Hill, there are containers of single sort that come to us. So, you know, maybe there's a mechanism there for, you know, helping them to divert more material out of the landfill.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to have the town of Reed Field extend our, extend or renew?
Renew.
Renew our contract with EcoMaine for a period of five years.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the contract with EcoMaine, to renew, excuse me, EcoMaine for five years. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I can't imagine life before single sort. That's my only.
It's wonderful.
Was a lot of baling.
Lot of containers.
Okay, we'll go ahead to the vote. All in favor? Thank you. So we have some action as well.
Absolutely, we'll be in touch.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for your patience.
Are you going all the way back to Portland?
I am.
Drive safely.
Thank you. It's, you know, we're in business right now up in the mid-coast, and we just signed a little plane up there.
Oh, wow.
This is an easy drive.
Enjoy the hour, then.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to move on. Do we need a minute stretch break?
Can we take a 30-second timeout?
Yes, let's just make it a minute or so. We're in recess for one minute.
I got a feeling he's up.
We're in the wrong business.
We are. Thank you. What we're doing now is we're reviewing the draft budget and warrant review. And Eric did send a note out to board members that if you had specific questions, because we want to make sure your drill down questions are answered, that if you really need to know how many pencils and what color they are going to be, that that question's answered. For the purposes of this discussion tonight and look at things, I'm gonna go ahead and start with the warrant itself. And what I would advise us to do is not talk about the numbers in the warrant, because we can talk about those in the budget, but rather to see if the warrant's organizational direction is what we expect. And so I'm seeing that the- am I correct that these yeses are- represent yes votes already, yea votes from the Budget Committee?
They do. They will need to adjust one or two.
And we are doing our yea votes, not tonight, but on another night. Is that correct?
You certainly could, and I'd encourage you to do your yes votes tonight if you feel it's appropriate. It certainly makes the process easier moving forward, because we do have our public hearing, and then we have our final revisions being made, and then the final approval on April 2nd. So we're actually just a few weeks away from having the final draft, our final approval. So anything you can do tonight to expedite would be much appreciated.
Okay.
And I imagine that gives the public a little bit more information that, okay, the Budget Committee recommended, and we see the Select Board has done none, or we see the Select Board has done all or some. It might give them more direction as to where we are thinking ourselves.
Absolutely. I guess the last benefit that I want to mention is that for the printing process, if we can have things in place and just make a few changes if necessary, it makes it easier for us to get that warrant put together and sent out to the printer.
Yeah, I guess we need to talk a little bit about process. I mean, my feeling would be that we've- and we've done this in the past, instead of going at this here or there, that we would actually go through and do a yes vote individually on each warrant, or a yes or a no vote, obviously. Your recommendation vote, let's say that. So my thinking was we were gonna schedule that for a subsequent meeting, but I'm at, you know, whatever this board wishes to do, that's fine with me. What I was seeing tonight was a look at how the warrant was organized, and two, ask some questions about the budget, and, you know, whatever you'd like.
I'm happy with progressing, as you first stated, in looking at the organization first.
Okay.
We've gone over these numbers multiple times, so if we don't have a lot of issues with organization, I'm very happy to go ahead and do voting on articles.
Okay.
Probably not by number, but by category, since the articles could change number.
Yes, and I'll let you know that what we did with the Budget Committee was we went through the articles, discussed them, and if anybody had any reservations, we would make a note, and at the end, they voted on all save any that had questions or might be a no vote, and they didn't have any, so it was unanimous.
That was my next question. Can we do that?
You absolutely can, yeah.
Instead of voting on each one, if we have any objections, we'll set them one aside.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it, and I believe that's the way we've done it in the past as well.
Well, that would be speedier.
Yep.
Yeah. Good night, Sandra.
Cold hands, cold hands.
I guess I'll just start with the couple of questions I had on the warrant. I actually didn't have any, except the observation is I don't see any organizational problems with it whatsoever.
Except there's a blank above Christine's name.
That's because there's no one else who's turned in papers yet, I am assuming.
That is absolutely right.
Point.
But once those- once someone else does-
My understanding is someone took those papers out.
Okay, good, all right. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
I did want to just make a note, since it's listed individually, on Article 30, the repealed enterprise fund.
Yes.
So that is replenishment of that fund on a non-grant basis?
Yes, so that is authorizing, so that if we do issue loans, we can issue up to $10,000 without having to-
In total.
In total, without having to go back for voter approval. That $10,000 is offset by revenue already in the fund.
Okay, thank you.
I have one quick question, it's just a concern as to the level of funding, and as for assessing in the CEO.
What number are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Article 7.
Thank you.
Are we- is that funded to the proper level, do you think, Eric? I'm sure-
Yes, I believe it is. We have-
Because Eric, those positions have increased.
They have, and we were very deliberate in how we put that together. The monthly fee for the assessor was included, added to the hourly rate for the code officer, so yes, I'm very comfortable with those numbers.
I have one incredibly fussy thing. I guess we call this a Greg Durgan comment.
Always welcome.
He lives on.
Comment not Greg knows.
He lives on, and that is in Article 7. It's the only article where all the numbers are not lined up onto the right side.
Oh, yeah.
And in Number 8. Just that presentation aspect in the list. Well, it's so nice and neat everywhere else that you see that, and you're like, ooh.
No, in Article 8, it's like that.
Yes, just the top one.
There's just one, the top one, yeah, so I will-
If I look hard enough, I might be able to find another.
I'm not gonna look quite that hard. I like the layout. I think the categories have made sense. They're the same categories that we have been discussing all along this year. I don't know how we make it noted, but maybe that could be part of your presentation to the public when we have our public budget meeting, for which things have changed this year from past years, where items were deleted from one category and put into another, so if people are looking at last year to this year, they're not going, oh my goodness, this is so much more, or this is so much less.
Yeah, we have a little bit of both, some additions, some consolidation of articles, but yeah.
So you're saying the numbers may be changed?
From the last time you looked at the budget, there were some changes.
Not the numbers of money, but the numbers of the articles themselves, the title of the article. Article 4 will remain Article 4? Are we at that point?
Yeah, we're very much at that point, unless you have a desire to completely remove something, or switch the way things are structured. For example, at the end of this, we had Article- Article, where is it? 30. We have several lines that were- well, one is new, abatements, we hadn't specifically set out a dollar value for, abatements in past budgets, and we should be. We should have a warrant article that authorizes the appropriation expenditure of those funds, even if it was being taken out of the overlay. So it's still being taken out of the overlay. The overlay is just $20,000 instead of $15,000, because we're also including any potential overdrafts, which was an article we had previously. But, so I guess, the long story short, abatements is new, overdraft is old, real estate is old, and the enterprise fund. However, those all were individual articles, because they all fall under miscellaneous expenditures in our accounting and in our budget process, we've combined them here for that one article. And next year, we would likely bring in the $50,000 or any future renewal of the property tax assistance program, because that is also under miscellaneous, but being the first year of that program, it deserves its own line, in my view.
Especially since it's gonna be- the ordinance is gonna be- policy, we gotta vote on it, right?
Yes, so other than that, there's been, you know, a very similar structure to last year. We do have Article 13, excuse me, Article 15, which is borrowing for the Marinacook Lake Outlet Dam. So that is a format we haven't seen for a couple of years, but very similar to what we've had in the past. I did add one Section 4 debt limit, which references state statute and how much we are actually allowed to borrow under state law. And when I talked about this with the Budget Committee, they were quite surprised that we had such little debt, less than 5% of what we potentially could, even with the approval of this additional borrowing. So we're very, very healthy with respect to debt, yes.
I have a question about Article 37.
Sure.
And the omission of relief, because I think if I saw Article 37 and it said, "Shout out the town vote to adopt a new property tax ordinance," I would be like, what? What are they doing? You know?
Yeah, I think that we technically have it titled the Property Tax Assistance, but you're right, we should be using the full name.
I just, I just, I just, just thank you.
Excellent catch. Full name.
Because if you, I mean, like, you know as well as I do-
Your phone will start ringing.
Somebody sees Property Tax Ordinance, they're like, ahh.
Yeah, 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 no.
Thank you.
I'll make a note to review the full and proper names-
I appreciate you.
-of these articles.
So if there are no more comments on the organization of the warrant, why don't we go into the draft budget and answer any questions that are there, and then we can come back to the warrant and go with our approval process if we desire to do that tonight? How's that sound?
Good. Eric, could you just make a note-
Because numbers would come before.
That Article 33 also has an alignment issue.
Oh, yeah, top three.
And the last line of Article 16.
Okay.
Sorry.
I think we should designate, Catherine, to go in and look at the final warrant.
Can Catherine be the Greg Durgan proxy?
The last, last of the-
I'm not sure Greg would approve of that.
So going into the draft budget itself, which you've had a couple renditions of this in front of you. I don't think there's been a great deal of change from what I've seen at this point.
There has not. I can run through them quickly, the two or three, if you'd like me to, that have changed.
Just the changes, huh?
Just the changes.
Be very brief there, my friend.
So if you look to the very- the next to the very last page in this bundle, you will see the summary of changes.
What page is that?
It would be, there is-
Oh, they all have the same page.
Yeah, I'm still struggling on how to page multiple, or how to number multiple pages in a worksheet sequentially between multiple worksheets.
Make them all a PDF, and then just use the footer.
But I've got-
Thank you, Bruce. Bruce solved my problem.
Make them all a PDF. You make it all one PDF, and then you-
And they all have pages.
...use the PDF at our footer.
Brilliant.
When you're all done.
And he's brilliant. He's brilliant.
So since the last meeting of the Select Board, which was on March 5th, we have adjusted the transfer station hauling up to account for cost increases. We have by 3,750, and that is to account for the fact that we did put the hauling out to bid, and even though we have a sweetheart deal with our current contractor, it may not, and probably will not last, so we need to plan for the almost inevitable outcome that costs will go up. So I looked at the cost of the low bid and plugged it into our budget numbers, and that's the difference, so.
Okay, and we're currently with Troyano.
We are currently with Troyano.
Thank you.
Yep, the, let's see, we reduced trails to 1,808, because we had actually been working with a draft budget number, and their number was less than what we had drafted, so that's a positive change there. We added $25,000 paving to capital for the transfer station, and offset with use of reserve funds. That should pave three inches, 18 feet wide with a gravel shoulder.
Nice.
I'm sure we will get a lot of positive feedback about that.
I hope so. We added $5,000 to the overlay to cover overdraft. That has always been there, but we hadn't actually had an overall- we had the overlay, but it was just for abatements, and we hadn't actually budgeted for overdrafts, so we took care of two separate issues but related with the next couple of changes here. So there was the addition of overdraft to the budget side, and the addition of abatements to the warrant side. And we adjusted the borrowing for the $117,000 for the Lake- Marinacook Lake Dam to reflect a 3% cost, which is the most current. We had a 2.88 estimate from the bond bank, so we plugged in three. And then we adjusted the mill rate one more time. Finally, after looking at the bond schedule, I realized that we will have just one interest payment in the fiscal year of 2019, so that actually reduces our burden in March, March, I believe, of 2019, is when we will have that one interest payment. So that reduces the burden for that year to $6,000, down from the 22.5 that we had actually had in there originally, so savings there, and the new estimated mill rate 1936, with the school budget being held flat.
And can you just remind us of the current mill rate for this fiscal year?
1929, so we're looking at less than, less than 1% easily.
This is prior to the schools.
Prior to the schools. My- I shouldn't say it. I'm not gonna say it.
We can expect that it won't be flat.
It's a different government spot. I think it's very difficult, actually. One thing that our delegation, if you will, asked for was to ensure that that warrant article, to return money to towns that comes about from either application of funds out of the building surplus that the state now has at its disposal, or whatever, like last year, where we did get how much back?
Accredited?
Over $100,000.
It was a lot. I don't recall. I don't recall, honestly.
I think it was like, and that was like $9,000 a month for 12 months.
That's where we wrote the letter, saying we wanted-
Yes.
That was our choice.
Well, there was an actual warrant article that-
There was, yeah, on the school warrant, and that request was made, and I didn't hear anything. I'm sure they'll be continuing with that this year.
Well, Bruce made that comment as a request for the board to do that again, when we were at the meeting last week.
Right. And of course, I would encourage citizens to go to the public meetings for the RSU, including where they passed their warrant, and then their process is, the whole thing goes out as one question, the validation budget, and that's also in June, too. So it's very imprecise of us to try to guess at what-
It is.
-there will be. We do know that sometime in early April, we should have really firm numbers for the school district, or at least we'll be asking them for a number.
Yeah, we have the meeting on the 10th, and that's when they plan on releasing that final budget.
Do we have, I mean, we have a joint meeting coming up with the school committee?
We just did that.
We just had it.
Oh, yeah, that's what we were expecting.
It was last week.
Oh, that's right.
You could not make it.
I was, yeah, that's right.
It had moved to that date because of a storm.
That's right, yes, that's why. Okay.
Okay, other questions on the budget itself? Thank you for the highlights of the changes.
No problem.
I think that was very succinct and informational, and then I guess I just wanted to ask, because I cannot remember from all I've looked at, did we separate out the county budget as a separate?
We did.
Thank you.
We did. Oh, one other change I should mention, that I don't recall if I talked to you about this the last meeting or not, legal fees being, becoming its own division, and having a separate line on the warrant, not a separate line, it's being called out separately, because it is a division, and we originally had had $12,000. I put that back to the 15, because it seems as though we may have some issues coming up, and with that, the recommendation is that that also be a carry forward, so that we have additional money going forward if it's not expended.
Because our legal battle's not always over with at the end of the year.
It's not always over the end of the year, and it's also money that if we have available, it's good to have it up front, instead of having to come back and ask the voters, or overexpend, so.
And I'll just remind the public that it's not all about legal battles. We have due diligence things that we always review, whether it's ordinances or ballots and so on and so forth. So there is, there are regular legal expenses that we will always occur.
Absolutely, and those account for $6,000 to $8,000 average.
Average year.
Average year, yeah.
Our goal is always average years.
Absolutely.
In that category.
Absolutely.
So do we want to come back to the warrant, and?
I would be happy to do that.
Good, we're there. If we were to take a look at this warrant in its entirety, which is Articles 1 through, well, the ones that carry recommendations are 7-
36.
7 through 35?
36.
Yeah, 7 through 36.
So do we want to go through by number and just see if anybody has a particular issue with any of those? Is that what the suggestion has been?
Or we can just ask for anybody to ask for one to be pulled out at this point, but I'm happy to do it either way.
I mean, ultimately, I mean, are we just looking for that bottom line? Select Board says yes, Select Board says no?
That's correct.
And is there, is it historically in opposition to what the Budget Committee has already said?
Sometimes it has, there's been opposition.
Past, but past board.
Because I'll tell you right now, I don't have any issue with-
I don't either.
-supporting what the Budget Committee has done.
Neither do I. It's been such a process, right from the beginning, we've been kept informed all the way up.
Nothing here is, yeah.
There's no surprises here, no.
I don't mean to, I'm not being curt, I just, I feel very confident with what they're doing.
Having been to many, many, many town meetings, open floor town meetings, whenever, it's been my experience that the voters will always go with the Budget Committee recommendation 99% of the time.
I certainly have it.
The Select Board, because they really get into the nuts and bolts of the budget, and, you know, so.
Eric, I have a question on Article 15, on the bond. There's no recommendation required on that?
That's a good question. I think that because it is a financial line, you certainly could and should.
I think, well, it's financial, we have to, I believe.
I think it's, I'll check, but I believe it's optional, but maybe not.
Might it be better for us to approve it, if that's our choice, and if you don't need to print it, then don't, but add it in as an approval?
Yeah.
Just where there's nothing there right now.
I think that the financial statement certainly is separate. You wouldn't be making a recommendation on the financial statement, that's just what it is. But the language above the financial statement from the treasurer, certainly, I think, I'll look into that, because you probably, there probably should be a line there for yes and no.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, why didn't the Budget Committee also ask about that?
I think they might just not have picked up on the fact that it wasn't there.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, it's just maybe an oversight, so we can do it, and then-
They can do it again.
And then they can do it.
They already have a meeting scheduled to do so, just not-
So it's housekeeping, almost.
Yeah, yep, so I will, I'll make a note.
And ultimately, at the end of the day, whether or not these get voted in, who votes?
It's up to the-
Right, right, so it's almost, yeah, I get you.
Do we make, do we make recommendations on ordinances?
No.
No, okay.
And Article 32 has nothing as a recommendation either. It's at the bottom of the page.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, no, there is, oh, no, you're right, you're right, I thought it went to the next page, but-
So we should do that one as well, I think, right?
Right, because it's to accept revenues.
Well, yeah, I'll check on that one as well, but it certainly wouldn't hurt to approve it, and if we need to. I don't see, there's no dollar values? There's no dollar values, but I'll look at that as well.
But we're authorizing to expend revenue.
Yes.
And we do author, we do say yes to other expenditure of revenues, which is 33.
Even though there's no particular dollar amount.
We can also check back and see past warrant.
I think that's what we're going from here, that's why I'm kind of surprised. It may be something that we haven't done in the past, because this is a modification of past, you know, Article 15, I'm not surprised that there was supposed to be a recommendation and wasn't, because we haven't touched it for two years. But this one, we see regularly, so I will just look into that, but if you want to vote on it anyway, no harm to follow.
I would make a motion that we approve Articles 7 through 36, with a recommendation of Select Board recommends yes on each article.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and so for the purposes of moving forward, are there any amendments to that motion, because you want to withdraw a particular article for further discussion? Seeing none, we will now proceed with any discussion on the main motion, which is to assign a yes recommendation to 7 through 36. There is no discussion, all in favor of the motion. I want to thank the Budget Committee for all of their due process in getting this to the point where it was very easy for us to understand the information behind everything, and as Dennis said, bring forward really good, good due diligence that we can trustfully accept and move forward with, so I really appreciate that.
And I want to thank Eric and the Budget Committee and Teresa.
Especially Teresa.
Because this has been a process that we follow right from the beginning, there's no surprises, we've been aware of everything, so when you get to this point, it's where we know what's going on. It's not like we have to pull this apart and see where we're at, so we really thank you, because it's a lot of work to-
And I, in my history of being involved in the town budget and Select Board since 2007 or '05, I believe, this is the earliest we've ever gotten to this point. So congratulations to all those involved, kudos.
I know, send special thanks to the folks that are new to the Budget Committee this year, to take on that responsibility. I know Ms. Schneider, I believe, is, is that right?
Yeah, she knew.
Yes, Ellen, and we appointed her, and just that sort of willingness to be a part So thank you very much. I concur.
And so, kind of in closing, what I would like to remind the board is that this isn't the last piece on this, that on the 29th, we have a hearing, and the public has received the postcard, they'll receive due notice and so on and so forth, and the public could change our thinking on an article, and we may change our recommendation, or there may be other budget changes that occur. The Budget Committee will be meeting with us on the 29th, and so we'll both be hearing